Arthur just excused himself to get a tissue. He'll be back.
You can't have a meeting without him either.
No, he's essential. Well, we can, but it's gonna be over by the time he gets back.
Can't do that, Eli.
That's right. How you doing, Bear?
Good, good. How about you?
Very busy. Very busy. There's a lot of work going on. I don't know, it may come to a screeching halt when we hit wood and steel and aluminum tariffs, but we'll see what happens. I don't know. I mean, just the fire in East LA is enough to be able to raise the prices on wood, so we'll see what shakes.
Yeah.
You know. Don't know. Right now, people are trying to get in under the wire, I think.
I remember I had Rodney, what was his name, in LA. They had the riots and everything, the Rodney King. Yes, yeah.
Right.
Rodney King riot. I had a guy that, you know, he had his money in that area of LA that was going on with riots. Couldn't get his money out, so he had to delay the closing.
Sure. Oh, yeah.
I've had a few things like that, it's been weird.
The way things work.
Yeah.
How we're all interconnected.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 18, 2025 City of Cankey Planning Board Meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call. Beverly Hood, present.
Deb Terrell.
Here.
Chip Roerham.
Here.
Barry McCracken.
Here.
Arthur Wax.
Here.
Susan Lopez. Jose Arturo Barajas. Steve Case. We have a quorum. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the February 11, 2025 minutes? We have a motion by Chip Roerham.
And Barry McCracken.
And a second by Barry McCracken. Any corrections, changes, or additions? Seeing none, roll call. Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Roerham?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Arthur Wax?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. Communications?
So we are still working on Prairie Walk. We are still working through review on QuickTrip. The Harbor House project was approved at the March 3 City Council, as well as the Washington Avenue rezoning.
Any other communications, city council actions?
That's all I have.
All right. New business. Case PB 2025-3-1. A public hearing for one, a map amendment to rezone from R2 to Family Residential to C2 Service Commercial. And number two, a conditional use permit for a landscape contractor, including outdoor storage yards for certain real property located at 1192 South Washington Avenue, KKK Illinois 60901. Will the applicant for this case please come forward? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. This is Junior, this is landscaping, and I'm the son of the owner of the 1192 South Washington Avenue. My dad's been...
If I could stop you just one quick second, if you could raise your right hand?
Yeah.
You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? All right, you can proceed.
That's what I'm saying. My dad's been having an illusion about making a business there in Washington. This has been vacant there for quite a few years now. And here we have some plants kind of lined up already, which need the planning done to where everything's gonna be okay yet. But for a moment, we're still working on it. Hopefully, everything passes by. We're only gonna be open from 8 to 1 period, so from March to November. So the beginning of November, everything should be closed, you know, gates closed, no more business there until next year.
Any questions from the commissioners?
What are you gonna be selling?
We're gonna be selling small bushes, plants, roller bushes and stuff like that. No trees, anything more bigger than, they say, six feet maybe, you know. I'm saying maybe it's like small shrubs, you know. And I know for a fact that we're a small business. We've been operating for about a good 30 years now. But at the time, mainly just kept it at a minimum, you know, didn't try to expand too much where it just became too much trouble for my minimal costs, you know. So hopefully, everything goes good and we make some difference.
Can you restate your name for the record?
My name is Jesus Pizano, Junior.
Mr. Pizano, what's on the lot now? Is it just vacant?
It's just vacant with the garage. You know, sometimes we get there, you know, just cut off some material, you know, such as like small plants that were left over. We should keep those until the next time people want, aren't interested in purchasing them, then we'll put them back out there and deliver them.
And what is the property next door being used for?
There's two neighbors, people live there. There's an apartment to the right and to the left. Right next to the neighbor, there's laundry mat. And on the corner, there's another business there, the hotel. Right behind the, in front of the train tracks and, you know, Washington and train track right there.
Oh, so this is the lot where Panazos used to have landscape, yeah.
Actually, it was.
Okay.
I have a question. Are you aware of the parking requirements that are imposed upon you?
I was talking to Melissa King about that. She's been recommending me areas and how many square feet are gonna be required for me to make the parking lot. She said complete three and two parking lots minimum for a thousand square feet.
Yeah. I bet, you know, it would be helpful if you supply a site plan?
Yeah.
So that we can see what's going on.
We're currently working on that as well.
Very good. One other thing that comes up has to do with the adjacent properties that are not of the same zoning classification as you're requesting. It requires that there be a fence or a landscape barrier in between. Are you ready to comply with that?
Yes.
And that would be an important thing to include on your site plan before you submit it to me to review. And also, it'll also be to building by that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Good, I'm glad you're aware of that.
Yeah, yeah. You can see right there, it says the outdoor storage fence, the blue outline. That's where we got, you're gonna be building a fence right there connected to, there's a small piece behind the existing garage. It's about three by 10 maybe, 30 by 10.
Okay.
Two by two feet around there. We're gonna connect that and bring that to the storage location though, so any bugs that we have there for like plants won't be flying around. Any fabric that we may use won't be even a problem for like flying around in a day. And besides that, the green outline will be all those shrubs, small, small bushes, you know. They probably grow as big as our needles, you know.
Well, they need to grow bigger than that.
Okay, yeah, in that case, then we'll make sure.
They need to provide, you know, a screen barrier.
Okay.
There's one other thing too, and I don't know if you're really gonna deal with this, but it has to do with lighting.
Yeah.
You know, there's certain lighting for security and certain lighting for just the convenience of walking around. The code, when you read into the details of the code, requires that the light at the property line is one-foot candle. That's like moonlight. All right, so if you have light that shines out onto adjacent property, it can't add. You gotta stop it.
Okay.
So, I'm just giving you warnings, you know, concerns to make sure that you know what's going on and that you have the ability to be able to do that.
Yeah.
So that's another one too. All right, thank you, thank you.
Tips. You're giving them tips.
Yeah, that too.
Yeah.
Of course. How long have you been doing this?
I've been working with my dad since I was 15, and I'm 30 now. My dad been working this since I was, before I was even born. And all started over here, and all the gentleman my dad knew, Mr. Wayne Sims over here from Hersher.
Yeah.
That's where my dad actually started from. And then from there, sent him to school, and then the business just slowly started picking up, you know, to a point where my dad was like, I need more help now. Now, I remember being a little boy, my dad was a big child once, you know, playing around with the little farms and stuff. You know, so here we are now. Thirty years, 15 years later, and I wanted to continue the business. I'm telling my son, like, when you older, you gonna be working with me.
Nice, nice. Is there a preference as to the type of biz that's gonna be required?
It doesn't have to be a fence, does it? It can be a fence or plant material.
Right.
Okay.
If it's just plant material, it is required to be wider, I believe. I might have the code section with me, but I, yeah, I think the five feet is the fence, and there's already a fence there. I'm not sure. There's a six-foot fence along that property line.
Okay.
On their property. They are providing, I mean, in this plan, it shows a 10-foot transitional yard, because that's what's required, regardless of the landscaping code, so that the area is required to be, like, the use can't be in that area.
Okay.
Um, so it really, I think because there's already a fence there, we could just allow them to put the five-feet worth of landscaping in. It would just be narrow planting, but they could also do arborvitae or other kinds of evergreens that stay relatively narrow, but get tall.
Okay.
I think they have enough space to do either. And I, we've talked, I've talked with them about the perimeter versus what would be along, like, the front and the side, which is really kind of additional. It's not really required through the code so much as there would be other parking requirements where the parking lands ultimately. But the perimeter strip is required along that north side, like you said, adjacent to the residential.
Right. You know, one other thing too is that the landscaping that we're talking about is almost like sales. It's just like you show people what landscaping can do, you know, and it promotes really why you're doing what you're doing and why people should be involved.
Mr. Wax, can you use your mic? Your mic?
I'm sure all lots need utilities already there, where you have that available.
Yes.
My primary thought was, that many plants, you're gonna have to have some water.
That's right, yep.
Constantly.
Yeah.
Helping them grow.
Another thing that I have been noticing that Ms. King had recommended me, that when I start laying the parking lot, the asphalt, the water draining, I gotta make sure it doesn't flood or is running to a different area. So for that, I've been currently like talking to the planner that's been helping me draw it, to like let him take that into measurements to like measure how many water is actually seeping through, so it doesn't actually overflow when we actually start laying down the asphalt and everything else, you know.
Thank you.
Barry McCracken, what are the light green squares and rectangles?
Those light green rectangles, it was my dad is in the future is planning on pushing to make it a garden center later on, like about maybe at the end of this year, actually applying through it and going through with the, you know, to with the fees and the actual drawings and requirements that we need. So hopefully, maybe by mid, mid, um, I'm not sure. And how soon we can start that, but my dad's, you know, he's been the one that's been kinda like going after that, you know. But I told him, like, just for now, just make it as a business location, you know, just his landscaping. And then later in the future, come back and just apply, just to pay the fees and, you know, meet the standards and requirements that we're required to continue with the garden center.
Is there gonna be some kind of like awning or something?
Yeah, there're gonna be small rectangles that, we'll be planting small plants there. And we'll be dividing the areas, such as each rectangle will be like, one area is like shrubs, evergreens, roses, and so on. You know, so that way the people can stop by, walk in there and just see actually the different layouts and plants and varieties that we have available.
Are these like raised beds?
In a way, not too high, but just enough so like, probably like around there.
What are your hours of operation?
We operate there currently, only stop by in the mornings just to pick up some tools and stuff like that. We have shovels there in the garage currently that we just leave there for safety. And we just leave them there for storage, and just every morning, we stop by for a good hour and just head out. You know, we won't be back until like about 3, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. But if we do proceed on, we're doing a garden center, we have a plan to open from 3 till 5, you know, regular business hours. Eight to 5, I mean, sorry.
I just wanna clarify that opening the business at this location is still going to require some level of parking compliance. I know that it's gonna take a little bit of time for you guys to get the engineering up and running, so, but I just wanna say that your dad can't operate until he has everything approved through our offices.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Barry McCracken, I got another question. So there's a big tree that's about two stories, but it's been cut down?
The one that's inside our property has been cut down for quite a significant. We cut all the big branches that were hazardous or dangerous or look like they're dying already. You know, we chopped them down to a minimum, so we're, small branch, the new branches are growing in. You know, to give them space for them to bloom again. Besides that, we've just been keeping the things clean, you know. No branches falling, like making sure like no branches are still dry or like are gonna be causing hazard to the people.
Are you gonna be removing that tree?
The one inside, maybe so. Not sure. I'll have to talk to my dad about that further information.
So they didn't see it on the drawing there?
Yeah, it's kinda gone there. Yeah, but I mean, my plan, my dad's plan was maybe putting plants around it, you know, make it decorative in a way. And then just the other squares that you see up there will be like pots in the areas where you could pick your little plants from.
Just to be clear, Barry is speaking about a tree that's kind of near the northwest corner of the garage. It's on the north side. Jesse, it's actually, you can't see my cursor.
I think the tree is in this area, this location, like kind of here, right, Barry?
Yeah.
And it's like half-dead.
Yep.
And I think Barry was mentioning maybe it would be nice if that came down, because it was taken down a portion of it a long time ago, but the rest of it should probably come down because it's like a nuisance tree. The other tree on the front, I think we would want to have it saved. And a portion of it's gonna be on our parkway and not on your dad's property, so there's a part that you will not be able to put, to do anything around, just on your own.
Right. Okay. That's something we could do.
So is that gonna be considered a condition, removing that tree?
That's up to the planning board. I did not include that in my conditions, but...
What does everybody else think about that?
Yes.
What kind of a tree is it?
It's...
Or was.
Dead.
Is dead.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure I would even be able to, like, it almost looks black. Like, it's been out there for so long, it's like rotted. I really have no idea what species.
Were you indicating that you might want to keep a portion of the tree there just to use as a decorative purpose?
As a decorative purpose, yeah.
I would be okay with that, you know, like a six-foot, that's a strong feature in a lot of garden centers. It's a tree that has been cut off at like six feet or something, and they use it to display things on, so that would be okay with me. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, six feet, would it just be a trunk?
Yeah.
Or branches?
Yeah. Right. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just a trunk, because you can use that, you could put, you know, arms on it to hang plants, things like that.
You could dig it out and plant inside it?
Yeah, you could do a lot of things with that. It's a strong feature in a lot of gardens.
One thing my dad has told me that that tree is a maple and it's still half-alive. And he told me that if we maybe cut it halfway, new branches might start sprouting up, you know.
That would not be ideal, because I'm sure, as your dad knows, those would be what we call suckers.
Yeah.
And they wouldn't be strong, so I would prefer that you did not allow that to happen.
Yeah, if anything, yep.
Any other questions? I'll open up the public hearing, and if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this case, you may do so at this time. Seeing there none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I'm ready to move.
Okay.
In case PB 2025-3-1, the request for a map amendment to rezone from R2 to Family Residential to C2 Service Commercial.
You wanna do them separate? Separate, yes. Yeah.
I would like to move that we recommend approval of this request and that we attach the findings provided by the planning department and that we also request that the tree be removed to the degree that it would be, you know, no more than six feet tall and used for decorative purposes.
I think you can add that one to the conditional use when we get there.
Okay.
No conditions on the map amendment.
Do we have a second?
Barry McCracken, I'll second.
We have a motion by Deb Terrell and a second by Barry McCracken. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Roerham?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Arthur Wax?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The map amendment is recommended for approval.
And also, in regard to the conditional use permit in case PB 2025-3-1, I would also like to recommend that, that we recommend to city council that they approve this request, and I would like to attach the condition that the tree be used decoratively and not be allowed to grow. And that, you know, a site plan be submitted, ironing out the parking thing, and also...
So there's a, I don't know if you saw them, on page seven of the item, there's a number of conditions in here that you may want to read through.
Oh, I thought those were struck.
Well, from the map amendment, oh, no, I highlighted them, and I should've done it in yellow. I apologize. And I printed it, I realized how dark it was, and it was really, I used to do this at a previous job, and it helps to like focus you where that motion is, you know, for reading.
It's hard.
I should do it in yellow, so next time I'll do it in a different highlighter.
All right, let me see if I can read these. This'll be a real test. Okay. Subject to approval. Prior to commencement of the business operation, all improvements shall be submitted to the City of Cankey for review and issuance of a site and plan approval and building permits by the Building, Fire, Planning, and Engineering Department. The applicant shall obtain a City of Cankey business license prior to commencement of the business operation. All parking lot standards outlined in the city zoning ordinance must be met, including the landscape requirements, and appropriate landscape screening shall be provided on the northern property line to provide a buffer for the residential use, and appropriate perimeter landscape provided along the west and south property lines.
There's another page.
There's another page.
Okay.
Wait, there's more.
Oh, boy.
You're doing well.
There's gonna come a day when I can't do this. The applicant shall also be required to install a fence of not less than eight feet above the existing grade ground level around the outdoor storage area. Hours of operation of the landscape contractor portion of the business and any deliveries shall be restricted to between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Given the size and location of the site, no more than two work trucks may be parked on-site at any given time, and all deliveries shall be restricted to the alley. Deliveries and pickup of materials shall not cause traffic issues and can be cause for the conditional use permit to be revoked. All right. That's my motion, and I'm sticking to it.
Did we wanna include the lighting or is that in there?
The lighting is in the ordinance. Right now, I don't think they're proposing any lighting. I think what Chip was clarifying is if they do propose lighting, that there is a foot candle restriction adjacent to residential properties, and also would probably apply to across the street, because there could be glare issues from any lighting that was going to the housing across the street, so. But they would have to comply with that if they provided, in the site plan review process, if they were proposing lighting.
Okay. I think in this case, having lighting overnight might actually attract mischief to the site, so I'm okay with no lighting, given the hours of operation.
One thing that we didn't talk about was signage and the restrictions of signage. There are restrictions that if you choose to... There are restrictions that if you choose to put signage on the property, which you probably will, there are specific regulations about what you can and can't do.
Okay.
You'll have to comply with those two.
Yep. That's good.
Can I ask one other question?
Mm-hmm.
So you're gonna have things, this is Barry McCracken again, um, you're gonna have things out, displayed and everything during the day and everything for, displayed and everything, of course. What about at night, does it go back into the garage?
Um, that's a good question. I'm think, pretty sure my dad was talking about, he might just leave them out there, you know? And just put up camera systems, you know, just to, just like mislead the, the thieves or whatever, you know, make them think twice before they even jump, try to jump in that fence, you know? They don't know that there's actually a camera, um, being surveillance 24/7 there.
Yeah, they might be able to use that tree for that.
Yeah, there you go.
They could.
Camera tree.
Yeah, right there.
I'm sure your first season in business will determine how you handle that in the future.
It sure will.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Deb Terrell.
Second, Chip Warham.
Second by Chip Warham. Any other questions or comments? Roll call. Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Warham?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Arthur Lacks?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The conditional use is recommended for approval. Both of these will be on... Give me a second. The April 7th city council.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time, members of the board, and I hope you guys have a good one.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. You both.
You're welcome. Oh, you wanna speak? Sure. If you could state your name also.
Yes, Jesús Pisano.
Your name again?
Jesús Pisano.
Jesús?
Yes.
Okay.
Under order for a place and really, the only thing I got in my heart is, um, thank you for, uh, seeing my papers and thank you for your time. And, uh, I want to do something that's life. And really, I'm feeling great to see you here, spend your time for my, my dream, you know? So the only thing I have is thank you for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Good luck.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. B? Discussion of potential zoning code amendments to allow for the temporary use of shipping cargo containers for commercial startup and urban agriculture hydroponics?
It's a mouthful. So I have a, a quick, it's kind of, kind of wordy slides, but I'm a planner, so I think we do that sometimes. And we, I presented this at, um, the ordinance committee in February for discussion. Um, and prior to this ever coming here for, um, like a hearing or anything with code changes, we, we wanted to have a discussion here at this level. It's also gonna go to economic development. I think it's not gonna make it there until, um, just due to my work schedule, not until the April meeting. And so then it probably won't get into any kind of draft form until likely April, end of April or early May. So, um, we're still working through all of this. How it came to us was a, um, a Cankey resident who owns a prefab, um, shipping container. Uh, it's, she purchased it, it's for growing hydroponics and she wanted to move it to the city. And we currently, um, so I can, I can kinda get into this because, um, I'll talk about what's in our current code, but we were looking for a way to help her relocate here into the city. Our current codes just don't allow for it, so, um, the, the two things that we're gonna talk about are, um, the use of shipping containers for what you can call like innovative uses. They have been used recently for hydroponic growing and you can either set these up yourself or you can, um, buy prefab kits with these shipping containers. They come all ready to go and ready to use. And then the other thing that we've seen them used for is, um, pop-up retail, restaurant, commercial uses. The other way that we have seen them, I've seen them a lot, is tiny, tiny homes. Although we're not talking about that tonight because I think we're not quite ready for occupancy of shipping containers for living conditions. And that was also reiterated at ordinance committee, so, um, the, um, or the hydroponics are really interesting. I think a single container can produce over six tons of produce a year. And I think, um, the lady Jenny was at the ordinance committee that's looking to open it. She said it, um, it takes what would grow on a normally two-acre farm and produces the same amount of produce in a 326-foot square foot footprint. So it's pretty impressive. Um, increases access to local food, reduces overhead of gas and trucking for growers, and is a controlled environment, so it's really good for growing because it's climate-controlled and you can pretty much grow year-round if you need to. Um, it also helps with quality control on the produce because you have the, just same conditions all the time and so everything grows really well. As far as pop-up retail and restaurants, it promotes walkability and can create shopping and dining options for residents, creates a very unique experience, has low overhead, low startup costs, flexible space sizing. Both obviously provide a good economic value that can otherwise be, on otherwise vacant property. Um, our current code, um, has no allowance for any of this in a container. And really, what is going on in our ordinance is that the building department, the building code actually prohibits it, outright prohibits, um, the use of shipping containers. Uh, our temporary use section does have, um, some allowance for temporary storage in commercial and industrial areas, um, of trailers. And it doesn't really go into defining a trailer, um, except that it's got wheels and it's kind of a box and it could be like the ones that you see on a temporary construction site or it could also be like the back end of a semi-truck. Like it's kind of all those things. Um, but the specific cargo container on the ground is not defined that way in our code and is not allowed as a temporary use, whatever. So, um, the outright prohibition in the building code is, to me, is a very big problem and something that I have been led to understand we shouldn't even be granting variances for. We should be creating regulations around these types of things if we want to allow them. A variance is really when you're granting, um, a deviation from a code, not to allow a land use that doesn't, that is not allowed, right? So, um, I think as part of any of this that we decide to go through, we need to address that in the building code to allow some kind of flexibility in that language, you know, that, as otherwise specified or something like that. The, in looking at the temporary use section, I did, uh, notice that as compared to some other communities, we have a few things that we regulate, like, um, some storage in commercial and industrial. There's, um, allowance for construction offices and trailers, um, other offices and trailers, mobile storage units. But we don't really have any, we list what's allowed, the use, but there's no regulation control on the trailer. So there's nothing in there that talks about where you put it. There's nothing, like, is it, does it have to comply with setbacks? Does it have to come, you know, like that? Is it, um, does it have to be in a rear yard? The, um, it doesn't regulate what can go in that. It doesn't say that you can't put, you know, nuisance things or toxic materials or things like that. So many of the ordinances that surround temporary uses do have a section in there that talk about what can, can and can't go in these types of structures. And I think that if we're looking at regulating or thinking about these shipping containers and potentially putting them in a temporary use section of the code, that we should also pick these things up and try to add some regulation in there in the temporary use section to kinda clean it up, so. The, um, proposed regulations, um, that we were looking at for these, for the retail startup and restaurant, uh, commercial uses and urban agriculture would be to, um, add, potentially add the cargo container, um, or add the definitions, sorry, in the beginning of the zoning ordinance, amend the temporary use section to add, um, hydroponic agriculture and retail startup in containers. The conditions of the use for all of these though are that it's own, it's kind of like a pilot program is what we've been talking about. So, um, it would be only on city-owned property, subject to city council approval, subject to a lease agreement with the city council, um, recommended for six months. Although, when talking with Jenny, I know she, she can grow year-round. I'm not sure she would operate year-round. But I don't think the intent would be to allow someone to just permanently be on the property. I think that that lease agreement would come up in front of council on an annual basis for renewal or however the council wanted to set that up. If they wanted to set up for two or three years, they could also do that. It would be subject to the council's approval. The many regulations that surround this type of use, particularly when they're in prominent areas, which would be probably for the commercial, um, uses, the retail and restaurant uses, is that murals would be required. I think it really, what came up in conversation at ordinance committee is that it may depend on where this ends up. So like if, if there was a city-owned property that might be in kind of a predominantly industrial area, that we may not be so concerned about it having a mural on it if it was sitting in the back of a property. But if it's in a more prominent location, we might still, um, be open to this shipping container sitting there, but we might want it to have, uh, some type of art on the outside of it. Jenny's, um, shipping container, I'm not sure I have a picture of it here, but it does have, it's not like a mural, but it does have like, um, like, kind of like art on the outside of it. It looks attractive, if you will.
Question, uh, Barry McCracken. Is the art regulated or anything?
So, um, we have regulations in our signage ordinance that does differentiate about, like when and where you can put murals versus just signage. We can't regulate the content of it in any capacity. So, um, signage, and we can keep talking about this through this little discussion, but signage became a topic of conversation at ordinance committee because I think that, um, there's a difference between wanting to, um, allow or require murals or signage on these types of, uh, structures that are on our city property prominently located potentially in the city. It may not be down near the Riverwalk or something, but it might be near on East Court Street where it's still visible from a right-of-way and not tucked into an industrial area. And in those cases, we want that, but then how do we allow, allow or require it for those but not, but say you can't do it on a storage shipping container? And I think that becomes problematic sometimes with regard to free speech. And so, um, I, we didn't come to a solution. We just talked about how it might be a little complicated and we need to work between myself and the attorneys to make sure that we're meeting kind of all those variables, to make sure we're being legal and, um, so one of the concerns that I had was that if we did not restrict, the shipping containers that are using, being used for storage purposes, that they could be used for like billboards and things like that. And we really can't tell them that they can't put business content on it. Like we can't say this, that one's okay because it's a mural and it's art, but you can't do the same thing on the side of yours and put your business name on it. We can't, we can't regulate in that way. So, um, that just gets kind of tricky. I think, uh, Dawn mentioned, I believe, in ordinance committee that, um, that one thing that would be helpful is that if this is a pilot program and only on city property, that we could regulate the, this program differently on our own property. And I think that, um, that lends itself to still not allowing the signage on the storage shipping containers that are allowed through the temporary use section, but if we have a separate, kind of separate regulatory ordinance that's just for this stuff and this, just this program, that, that regulation and that ordinance could require and also allow for the mural without there being kind of a, a issue with the free speech. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm in my, my concern, again, Barry McCracken. So my concern would be, so somebody could have like a little mill finger or something like that up or, or something like that.
So you can't, our, well, our ordinance does have some, that talks about not being able to, I don't know exactly what it says, but you can't do something that, um, I think it says illegal. I mean, I think that's really what you, kind of where you draw the lines. You can't do illegal things. You can't do obscene things. But I think that it gets really gray. If you ask an attorney, it gets very gray as to what is considered obscene and what is considered illegal. So, um, and it has to, there's like an, I don't wanna get into this with like legality, but like, there's an, it has, there's a very narrow, um, allowance in the, in law for what, like, for you to be able to prove that. Like, it has to be like without a doubt that there is like illegal activity, so. But that's with any signage, Barry. I mean, I think that, I don't want us to get hung up on this because the reality is, is that that kind of signage and murals that we currently allow in our ordinance for any business in any commercial property is still under the same guise.
Right.
Businesses can still put up, put up signage and it, um, we really, we can't, we have no say in what the content is, really.
We're requiring this to be done, right?
Correct, but I think that when we're, if their...
What is the reason for that? I'm, I'm, it just escapes me.
Well, I think, so for instance, let's just, uh, you do have a map, so like let's look at the map. Let's say that somebody came in and they did want to be like out near East Court Street. And let's just say we had a property out there that they were interested in, putting one of these on. And they approached me, we have some kind of regulatory process for applying and they want to sit their shipping container, let's just say it's Jenny, and she wants to put her shipping container, uh, on one of our properties. And I think it could be that it, it's on a property that we otherwise think is probably fine for a temporary condition for a year or two, for her to have, um, her shipping container on. But we might not want that shipping container with no art on it or anything, just sitting on our property looking pretty drab and non-aesthetic. And so the murals can actually help, um, just make it look presentable to the public. Is that, is that clear?
Yeah, kinda, but I mean, it just, I don't know. It seems to kind of invite a little bit of trouble. Possibility of trouble though, too.
Oh, like, are you concerned about somebody like graffitiing it or feeling like they could graffiti or?
Or just the subject matter of, you know, it could be political, it could be just, uh, all kinds of different...
I also think with this, what we're doing here with this pilot program, that this presentation and application would go before the city council. And they would have to bring, in front of the city council, what they're proposing to put on the outside of that shipping container. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be like, um, you're approved and now go figure out your art. I think in this case, it would be presented in front of council, what they're proposing to put on the shipping container. So, um, they, the, I'd love to hear your opinions about this, but they, the, the hydroponic ones, not the, um, not the commercial retail restaurant, um, shipping containers, but the hydroponic shipping containers can be placed on timbers, like railroad timbers or gravel. So there was discussion about this also at ordinance committee. The attorney really doesn't have the idea of there being like gaps or spaces underneath it. I also have just concerns about using timbers in general, but, um, and then we obviously have, um, some regulations around using, the use of gravel in general. I believe that the hydroponic shipping containers need some elevation, a little bit of elevation, like a percent in order to keep them drained, I think. I, I'm not exactly sure why, but, um, they...
From a structural standpoint too, because of the flow of the nutrients that they use, it has to be level. And not every lot is going to be level. So something underneath it that would allow them to level the container would assist in the flow of the liquids into the appropriate channels.
Yep. There has been discussion about, uh, foundation landscaping in some ordinances where this, these are allowed. There's foundation landscaping that's required. It was, um, up for discussion because putting in permanent landscaping next to temporary shipping containers may not be ideal. You also might be on a property where, um, there's just hardscape everywhere, so you might not wanna do that. Jenny did mention that with regard to the hydroponics... Jenny did mention that with regard to the hydroponics, that she could, she's seen them and also in restaurant shipping containers in the city where they've done like container gardening on the actual shipping container outside that can also achieve the same goal. Again, I think we ki, I think we kind of left it at the ordinance committee that it might be something that we also just do on a case-by-case basis and would not be like a firm requirement, but that depending on what's being proposed and where it's being proposed, that we could address that in the lease agreement. Requiring parking where applicable, requiring inspections by fire and code, requiring compliance with, which would, they would need it through the business license program anyway, require compliance with signage code, require compliance with other general temporary use regulations, if we added any. And then there was just questions about bathrooms. I think the hydroponic growing facility likely does not need it. Jenny is one employee, which would not trip that. The, but the commercial startup definitely needs to be retrofitted for that at the end and dealing with security and lighting in some way. So, these are some of the things that I have found in other regulations for temporary use. They're generally applied to kind of the use of trailers and containers, which is adding regulations regarding its location, where it can be on the property with regard to yards, lots, whether it can be on a paved surface or not, or needs to be on a paved surface, whether or not it can be an easement or pose, or in locations that pose hazardous conditions, distances to wetlands, flood plain, floodway. And then there's also regulations I saw for restricting stacking of the containers, which I think you can see in like this picture, that's a stacked container situation. So like if you're, if we're looking at allowing these potentially, if we restrict it, I saw some, right, some ordinances where it said you, like stacking was prohibited completely. And so I wanted to bring it up for conversation because I think that it does, if we put that in, in the regulation, then I think it could limit us in some way. They add regulations on modifying the trailers, so there are communities that said you can't put any kind of permanent systems in there and connect to any kind of utilities. Again, at ordinance committee, there was a multitude of opinions, so I think there was some interest in making sure they had permanent electrical connections. They didn't mind that. They also thought that if we were going to proceed into allowing for retail and restaurant in these containers, that they would have to do some kind of systems in there with regard to HVAC, you know, if people are inside. But I think even Alderman Marzac mentioned that there's ways to get around that, even if it's not a permanent installation, that they're kind of temporary pieces of equipment. You might even be able to speak to this chip about some of the new equipment that's on the marketplace that could be used inside these containers. I think that, and some of these realms, we're not, we're not all experts in this, you know, in this stuff, so. No habitation, for sure, that was reiterated, and there, our attorney, again, she was not, just wants to be very clear that we don't want that here. No storage of hazardous or toxic materials. Again, trying to talk about how we regulate the signage, restricting it for the storage shipping containers, but also wanting to allow it for our, the commercial startup and the hydroponic growing. Conformance to all building and fire codes and site, potentially needing a site plan review. I, this could be cost prohibitive, and we're talking about doing a pilot program on our own city property. I think it can be four, $5,000 to have somebody do a site plan on something, so I don't know. I just want, I just want to hear your feedback on that, you know, like what you think about this for applicants. And then updated timeframe. So our ordinance in the temporary use section says all temporary uses are valid for 12 months. And then there's, like pods have a different regulation timeframe in them, and I think it just needs to be like reworked and mentioned in a way that they all, maybe 12 months, but subject to any other recommendations that are listed below or something like that. It's just this blanket statement at the bottom that basically states that all temporary uses are good for 12 months, and that they can get reissued after that 12-month period of time. And I think that all of these might have different timeframes, you have no idea, so. We talked about whether or not we would want to regulate these as a conditional use permit. And I brought up, we talked about this a little bit at ordinance committee as well, and I think that the value to it is that we would, on a specific property, get the feedback from residents that are nearby. That's really the only benefit, though, I think, with the pilot program that's going to be going to council. If there's a lease agreement option and there's discussion and negotiation there, I think we have plenty of options to condition that use on that property. But I think that the benefit would be to get here from the neighbors if we, if, we could certainly still require a hearing, but I think that would be the easiest. I think the committee did say that it's always beneficial for it to come here. They really think, I think highly of this board, so they think that you guys know what you're doing and that you're good with regard to making sure you're looking at all the details on site plan review, on, on the site plans and everything that comes to them. And so I, I think there was just opinions on both sides of it. I think, for me, it's extended time again and money again with regard to noticing and all of that, so that's, that can be, that can be a stumbling block economically for people trying to do startup business, which can be, I just got to weigh all those options. The, do we want to offer it on private property, not just city? I think that it kind of echoed in the room that it just, this would be good to try just with city-owned property. Do we want, what, do we want to prohibit from having windows, heating, cooling, plumbing? Those were just discussion topics. We talked about those just a few minutes ago. Do we want to regulate the quantity of trailers or leave that decision up to council? Which again, I think they wanted to leave this up to council. That was kind of the feedback I got. And that's, so that's kind of the overarching discussion on all of it. The other thing I will mention is that the committee, obviously, these uses are, are very different uses. Like, I think there was a discussion about the fact that this urban agriculture and these shipping containers really could be anywhere. They could be tucked way back in industrial parks and not in an area that's prominent, although they could be on, not on like our highly prominent areas, but like areas that we, that are still visible to the public. But that these commercial retail startups are probably going to be located in different areas of the city that we want to promote walking and dining and shopping and all of that commerce to happen. And that maybe these regulations are in two different sections. We also talked about that maybe it's not in temporary uses because they might be here for longer than temp, and it's just in its own ordinance. That maybe, maybe it's in the commercial and industrial section of the code that regulates it all by itself. So I think that's kind of the overview, and I just really want to hear feedback from the board members on your pros and cons to all of this and any ideas you might have.
I have thoughts.
I know you do.
I, I listened to the ordinance committee meeting in its entirety night before last in preparation for this, so this is probably more familiar to me than it is to some of us, but one of the things that I think it's important to recognize here is that the agricultural purpose, she's not going to be selling her basil and her edible flowers and her microgreens to people. She has contracts with restaurants. And so she's, this is just an agricultural business. It's not going to require parking, it's not going to require signage, you know, any of those things. So that sets it completely apart from the other proposed uses. Now, that being said, this is the only proposal in front of us, is one person requesting this for agricultural use. Nobody's lined up to request pop-ups in containers for other businesses. So it, it, it's my opinion that we should deal with the two separately. And since, you know, she wants to get started, so I think dealing with the agricultural part of it is something we could fast-track and let license and franchise and economic development and all of the other committees iron out all the other stuff. The other thing that I am concerned about with the pop-ups, business incubator-type situation, is that I know in cities like Austin and Chicago, when food trucks became popular, the brick and mortar businesses that pay taxes and pay insurance and pay for utilities and all of these things, they consider themselves more contributing members of the community, the business community, than a guy that parks his truck out in front of their business and all he's got is the overhead of his truck. And I can see that being an issue with the pop-ups as well. I could see where, you know, like Johnny's might not want one of these selling pizzas in the part of the farmer's market or something, you know. So that's something I think we need to be concerned about. The other thing is, when it comes to how these should be regulated, I do not believe that we should be as involved with this in handing out CUPs. A conditional use permit can cost anywhere from $1,000 to $1,500, depending on, you know, you've got your application fee, you've got your notifications, which can be as much as, what did they say, $500?
Yep.
To notify people, and then they might get turned down. And I think that the franchise, the license and franchise committee is, could be more effective in dealing with each of these on an individual basis, since we only have the one request right now. We have all the time in the world to iron out all of the details. The other thing about whether they should be on city property or private property, if they were on private property, it would dictate that we would have to offer conditional use permits. So I think just locating them on city property initially is the better way to go. I had some minor questions about electrical supplies and water. You know, I, I think there are a lot of sites where there is electricity available and others where there isn't, so I'm not sure where they would get it. And if, if we're talking about little restaurants, what about grease traps and grease disposal, things like that? So again, since the only request in front of us right now is from one individual who wants to operate an agricultural business, I would like to see us separate the two subjects and run with that one, and then kick everything back to committees, make them earn their $100 a meeting, you know, and let them iron out all the details of the incubators, the pop-ups. That's my opinion.
Brought up some interesting points. You know, with it just being agriculture and selling to the restaurants, business pop-ups not paying taxes, you know, and if it was on private property, would require a CUP, conditional use permit.
I could just see some sensitivity in the business community here about the city providing a space for someone to have a competing business, you know.
Right.
But the agricultural business, that would not be an issue.
No.
We have, what, two, I believe, agricultural growers in the city? We've got the marijuana facility, and then we have the mushroom facility that started out as microgreens. That fell apart, and now it's thrive mushrooms, which is thriving, and-
Where are they located?
They're on Eighth-
Yeah, Eighth Avenue, just north of Jeff-
And they got a conditional use permit, I would assume?
Yeah, yeah. It was in the old Phillips Press Building.
Yeah.
Okay.
But they sell on the farmer's market. You can walk in and buy from them, you can call and make an appointment and everything. So they're selling not only to restaurants, but they're selling to the community as well. She's not doing that, she's not growing mushrooms, she's basil, edible flowers and microgreens, I believe, is what.
Yeah, she said, and edible flowers.
Yeah, yeah. So she wouldn't be competing with any of the local businesses. I just think that that's a go for me.
I'm open to the, to the concept that you've, you've identified about splitting off the agricultural use, specifically the hydroponic agricultural use, from the greater issue of how do we use containers to grow businesses in our community. One of the first things that comes to mind to me is that we, we use the planned unit development as a way forward in terms of how we might comport ourselves with respect to new businesses coming into reality using containers.
Mm-hmm.
As far as the containers are concerned, there are so many regulations that we have in place that should be able to help us make this legitimate and competitive. The Americans with Disabilities Act is a, it's a foregone conclusion. The Energy Code is a foregone conclusion. You know, our requirements as far as what the Health Department wants for a restaurant is a foregone conclusion. There are two things that can be looked upon. One is that it's a temporary use facility, which requires a certain amount of latitude and oversight, which is not as stringent as a permanent facility. But the, you know, all of those requirements for a restaurant are to be met, whether you're in a container or you're in a brick and mortar building. So that does help us reinforce things. Instead of saying, well, we're not going to allow, we're saying, no, we're going to hold it to the standard of the building codes and the ordinances that are, that are applied to any other facility that, that has this type of occupancy. I've looked at containers, I've looked at food trucks, I've looked at food trailers, and I've looked at modular construction where you can plug things in, like a kit of parts, to be able to create restaurants. One of the things over time that I've seen is that in the food trucks and food trailers, that code compliance with all of the codes and ordinances that one would expect in a restaurant are part of how it gets designed. And likewise, with, with component parts where, you know, you occupy a space using component parts like a container, but, you know, for instance, you could have something that looks like a container, but it's really a food trailer that comes on-site and it can be parked. Next to that could be parked a walk-in cooler and, and other production, and they can be joined together. But they all have to comply with the local codes and ordinances, which should, which should be something that addresses the concerns over health, safety, and welfare that come up when we talk about how this, this happens. You know, bathrooms are required, you know, restrooms are required by, by, by our codes in terms of how they go. The Illinois State Plumbing Code says this is what you have to do for these things. And so consequently, if we apply all of that stuff to this concept, we should have something that is capable of protecting the citizens of the state, you know, with, you know, the health, safety, and welfare that they are entitled to through the laws.
So these are temporary structures, or on, like you were talking about on gravel or on timbers or something like that, correct? Can they be put on a lot like, you know, like what these guys have right now? Could they, somebody put something like that on, on there? Because like, like a mobile home, for instance, you know, you have a mobile home, it's usually a temporary type of structure, or not a structure, but temporary, you know, type of, it's not built on the site, you know, but it could be.
So our ordinance actually, the manufactured homes, that type, or the ones that, the ones on wheels are prohibited in the, in the city? But the, a manufactured home, like a modular home, we have some basic regulations in the ordinance, and it does require that they're on a foundation? Our ordinance-
I mean, like, like this, could something like this be built on, you know, a permanent, like a permanent-
Yes, it can be on a slab, on a concrete slab, yes. So Jenny clarified that at the ordinance committee, it can go on a slab, it can go on timbers. So I guess the bigger thing, typically there, stuff like this is allowed to be on a slab, right? And then they've been fabricated where they can sit on timbers. So that's, it's like okay for them to sit on timbers, also okay for them to sit on gravel as well.
So if it's on timbers, it's not going to be taxed? But if it's permanently attached to a concrete foundation or something, it would be taxed?
On-
On city property, it wouldn't be.
It wouldn't be taxed.
Well, not on city property, but, yeah.
Yeah.
But not on city property, but if somebody, if it graduates to private property?
I don't know, I can't, I don't know the clear answer about assessment for a temporary structure not on a foundation. I don't, I don't know how the assessor, that would be a question for the assessor's office.
Does he need? Can we help you with something?
They're sending a letter, so will be the, should be here at seven or something like that? But I just got here, I was working or something.
Oh, I wonder if he was a neighbor. Do you live on Washington Avenue?
I've got some lands there, that's why, some lands, so they're sending the papers.
What address do you own?
Uh... Uh, I'm in South Washington Avenue.
You own it?
Yeah.
You own the property?
Yeah, I own the four, the four lots in the back. It was like the low news, I don't know if you guys want to see the...
What, what's your name?
Oscar. This is, I was kind of late right now, that's it.
It's the notice, public notice?
Yeah. The meeting started at seven, so I was like...
So what, here, you can have your phone back.
I was, since I was working, couldn't make any time.
So that case, we've already closed that case, but if you, can you write your name and number down for me so I can talk to you tomorrow? Hang on real quick.
One thing that I'd like to talk about with respect to foundations is that the concern often comes up with, is this foundation moving or not? To the point where it might break a utility connection, water, electricity, gas, that it has to be stable enough to assure an unthreatened condition of connection.
That's a good point.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's not as, you know, because, because certain slabs and stuff can move with the ice.
Yeah.
Over time. And we have 120-degree temperature shifts over a course of a year here in Illinois.
Mm-hmm.
So moving is something that happens. So consequently, if we have connections that come from a utility to a building, they should be assured that the foundation is strong enough to prevent the building from moving.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that, that's, that's the big one.
Yeah, or tornadoes.
Yeah, I mean, we, I've done, I've done some projects where what we did was is that we created on concrete pier, steel column, steel beams, and then we set a structure on it, bolted it to that structure, which means that that structure then is held in place and stable.
Mm-hmm.
From uplifts, when you talk about tornadoes, you know, but also gravity, but mostly from uplift.
Mm-hmm.
That, you know, that thing's held down, not necessarily from settling as much as it is lifting.
Yep.
You know, so those are things that, that we need to deal with as far as making things stable.
Mm-hmm.
Hydroponic thing that Deb's talking about, you know, where you need to have a, you know, a dead level situation to allow the, the system to work, you know, that's a seasonal thing, but I mean, how do you adjust that over time?
Mm-hmm.
It's an important thing to take into consideration.
Yeah.
Where are they doing this now?
She, I'm not going to remember where she's got her, she's, it's unhooked right now, like her trailer.
It's on her father's farm in Martington.
Yep, she, I forget where she had it before.
Are they doing it in Chicago, or are they doing it in, you know?
Oh, all over, and in fact, there's a company on one of these pictures called, it's called Freight Farm, and if you go to their website, it's pretty cool. They sell, that's, this is the one she has. She has not this, not this mural, but she, this company, she bought from this company, the prefab kit, if you will. And they have case studies on their website, so you can read about them. They're all, I would say all over the country is where they, they're from, and they're growing all kinds of stuff, which is really interesting, so. Yeah, hers is at a, at a farm right now, and her family unplugged from its location from where she had it before.
So they're doing all over the country?
She moved here, so she wants to bring her business here since she moved here.
But they're doing, they're doing it all over the country, in rural areas, urban areas, everything like that, small towns, big towns?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
What happens when they start rusting?
Well, I mean, I think, I don't have an answer for, for that. I think that they have to be maintained like anything else that's in our, with nuisance code and things like that, that would apply to any structures that they would have to fix. I mean, I, I think over time, I think this program that we're talking about is a pilot program on city-owned property that's under a lease agreement, that would run likely, recommended on an annual basis unless the city council wanted to do otherwise, like extend it beyond that. And so I think if we have, if she, Jenny was on the property for a year, and she says, I want to stay here for another year, then we extend the lease agreement. And then if the third year, we start seeing rust and a panel is falling off and she's not maintaining it, then they don't have to extend the lease agreement again. And then if she doesn't remove it, we get it out of there, and then we put a lien on our own property. But, I mean, I think there, there has to be some kind of built-in, that's what the attorneys are for and the lease agreement is for, is to, is to work out those details.
Right.
Yeah. Not for us to deal with here. I think we're not going to know the answers to those questions.
And since they're going to be entering into a lease agreement with the city, that would be in direct conflict with a conditional use permit in some cases, you know.
Yeah, it could be.
It might require something different than License and Franchise or EDC or something wants from them. So I just, I, another point at which I really strongly feel that this should not be a conditional use permit situation, that it should go through city council and their committees.
I like this. It's interesting, and I think that this is kind of where ordinance committee was as well. Our attorney felt the same way. She felt like this could be like its own kind of standalone, small regulatory, what pilot, whatever thing we want it to look like that regulates just this urban agricultural use and what the process is. And I think for me, what's really important is for us to have a procedure in place and what the kind of bare minimum is for requirement for submittal, because otherwise, what do we tell people when they want to come, that aren't Jenny? Like, what, what do we tell them to do? You know, we're just going to have all kinds of applicants? Not really, but you know what I mean? You could have any kind of applicant wanting to look anywhere. Are there some of these properties that we don't want them on? Do we not want them in the, you know, that way we can kind of suss out some of the stuff before it gets to an application of going directly to council. So I think that we need to think about some of the baseline submittal requirements for this.
They have to have some money upfront so that if, that's, gotta be moved a year later?
Like an escrow?
Yeah.
Like an escrow or an LOC or some kind of guarantee potentially, yeah.
Or some bonding or something?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what that entails, but I mean, I don't want them to say, hey, I don't have the money to move this, and you're stuck with it.
Yeah. I mean, that is typical. We have a history of taking in an LOC or a bond or cash escrow. All of those things are, are options to talk about within the lease agreement, for sure.
How long has this type of thing been popular or been, been done? I mean, has it been?
Maybe last five or 10 years? I don't, in a shipping container, I really don't know how long that's been out.
There's a Starbucks in one in Fort Wayne, Indiana, that's been there for at least 10 years.
That's a restaurant.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And it's right downtown.
You know, one of these pictures was a Taco Bell, which I was like, look at that, it's Taco Bell.
I, I think when it comes to setting up guidelines that we might want to suggest, I think splitting the two uses is one that I would suggest, and also that we'd be sensitive to the other businesses, the brick and mortar businesses that are in any given location, and, you know, perhaps not locate competing uses too close together.
Agree, I agree with that, yeah.
What's not too close together?
Well, like, city property would include the lot where the farmer's market is, and you've got Johnny's Pizza right across the street. We wouldn't want a pop-up that was offering pizza right across from Johnny's, you know. We probably wouldn't want competition for, say, I don't know, there's, there isn't a lot of city property on the west side, but let's say Bussy's. We wouldn't want somebody selling plants or cut flowers or something across the street from Bussy's, you know, something like that. Because I, I do think, given what I know about this community, that could be a very sensitive subject.
Well, like a thousand feet or something like that?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know what they came, now in Austin, I know when it became a big issue, the city set up a food truck park, and they located all of the food trucks in this, it was beautiful. It had a lot of trees on it, and they put little, you know, tables out there where you could sit, and they had a line of porta-potties that the city provided, and there were five or six food trucks open at any given time. Sometimes the food trucks would move off the property to go to an event or something, like Cream of the Crop does weddings, does things all over the place, so, you know, they wouldn't be there permanently. But I could see us using, like, where the old Landing Restaurant was, that empty lot there. I think that would be ideal for a place to locate all of these pop-ups, because it really wouldn't interfere with much of anything.
Right.
I mean, I could even see like a bait and coffee shop going in there or something, because it's right next to the dam.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, those guys down at the dam, and I'm telling you, people come from all over to fish down there. Bill's down there every day, and he meets new people from other areas, Michigan, Indiana, Lackport, St. Charles. I mean, there's people coming from all, we're, we're known for our walleye fishing here, we're known for our smallies, things like that, catfishing during the hot summer months. And they come from all over, and they, Elliot's Bait Shop on Fifth is literally the only place. I mean, you can get dead bait out of a machine at Casey's or Walmart, but, you know, for an actual bait shop. And one of the things that they're constantly telling him is, why don't you put some coffee in here? You know, they want some coffee. And when the gas station across the street closed, that was their only opportunity to get coffee down at the dam. So I just think, I have this vision of, you know, maybe even Bill and I running a little bait and coffee shop down there, you know. It's a perfect location, and with the new Riverwalk kitty-cornered from it, it would attract people to both. It would be like cross-promotion for both of those sites. So I'm thinking maybe Austin had a great model for us to think about in gathering them in one spot, because, you know, you're not going to have, they're not all going to be taco stands, and if somebody can come and visit the Riverwalk and then walk across the street and have some coffee, or, or get a croissant, or, you know, whatever, pick up a bunch of flowers to take home, it, it would just be a real complimentary situation.
Well, my question, we're going down a little rabbit hole a little bit, but weren't we going to have that on North Harrison?
With the food trucks?
Yeah.
That never happened.
Never happened. I think I saw that ordinance, it was a private property, right?
Yeah, it was.
But I don't think it ever turned into anything.
No.
I'm just wondering why not?
Neither did the one over by Morning Star Baptist Church that fell through too.
Yeah, that's one I'm talking about.
That's the one he's talking about. Oh, that one, okay, okay. There was another one that was on property more in Upper Riverview that we okayed, and that never happened either.
Hmm.
I don't know about that one.
All right. I don't have anything else, it was really just to get this all in front of you, and just to clarify, we, we had met with Jenny, Barbie, myself, and one of the aldermen, and back in the fall, and Barbie, I think we collectively just wanted to have the conversation about these pop-ups. I think it's been talked about quite a few times, and Mike Hoffman has done some research in the past about it, but I'm not sure it has ever been brought to any of the committees to talk about, even the potential for it. So I, they kind of seem like very different land uses, and obviously, like, it, it sounds like we want to regulate them under two different ways, which is why we had these conversations all together.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. Thanks for all the feedback.
So question, so, Jenny, so if we approve her and everything like that, and things change a year later, and she has to follow it over the changes have been, correct?
She would probably just get a one-year lease.
Yeah, I, what do you, what do you mean? Because I think what we're talking about is establishing some kind of program that would allow her to apply. It would probably not come back in, well, aside from the code itself, if there, if the code is in the zoning ordinance, it would have to come here. It may not come back to you, though, because if it's in a separate section of the municipal code, which it could be, it might end up being something, like, we have a, well, I don't know, it's like, that's like a public way section, I don't know, I don't know where else, I'd have to talk to our attorney. I'm not sure where else it would go, but if it wasn't in the zoning ordinance, it may not have to come back to this planning board to approve the, any kind of ordinance change. And then it may not, because the procedure doesn't require conditional use, come back in front of you for that either.
Right.
It just depends on what the council wants to do. They may want your opinion, like I said, because they, I think they appreciate the work that's done here. So I don't know what that procedure looks like, but the idea is to put together something that gets approved quicker, then also including all of the things for the commercial pop-up just for the urban agriculture on city-owned property. And then she would apply, she'd go through that process, she'd get a lease agreement and whatever, and then open up her business. And then a year, I guess what you're saying is, in a year, if, if what ordinance changes? That ordinance? That, right?
It really...
Maybe, I mean, I guess if something...
Maybe we've discussed, or, or the city council has discussed a little more, and they go, you know, we need to do this, make it a little bit more regulated, less regulated, whatever, now she's going to have to follow that.
She might. So let's just pretend like it's no landscaping. Let's just say they say, nah, we don't want to have landscaping in this regulation at all, and we'll do it on a case-by-case basis, and then maybe they decide, we get two more, and we decide, you know what, we want to add some kind of regulation in here. She might have to comply on the next year. But the first lease agreement is going to be whatever's in that agreement, right? I mean, that's kind of how that would...
Right, I would think, yeah.
That's what I was kind of wondering, is how, if someone else is a little bit more regulated and everything, they're going, oh, well, she doesn't have to do that, but we have to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I feel like it's really important to have kind of the base level stuff that, like, we would want for every use. And then sometimes, just like we do with conditional uses on a case-by-case basis, you have site-specific things that are going to dictate other requirements, so...
Right.
Yeah, and I think that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was looking at my notes here, and there's one other thing, it's very minor. Would a mural, would a wrap qualify as a mural? Because wraps are kind of inexpensive these days.
I'd have to look at our, I think it is, I mean, I think, like, our, I bet, I don't know what our definition says, but I'm sure it says some ambiguous thing about, I don't know, a painting. It's probably...
And a wrap is an application.
It is, and it does...
An image onto a surface.
It is, it's content. I mean, I think it is content.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
If it was like a single color, maybe? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, you know, the, the truck that the guys use, Jim Rowe has a program called Real Justice, R-E-E-L, and it's a fishing program for kids that may be at risk or need mentors, or maybe just want to learn how to fish. And my husband and several other volunteer... And my husband and several other volunteers, Miles Maiden initially started the program, but he, he joined the Navy, I believe. So Adrian, his father, has taken over his position, and then they have maybe three other volunteers, and they go out on Wednesdays during the summer months, and they are at different locations every time. And so they needed to buy a van in order to house all of the fishing poles and all of the tackle and things that they took to the various sites to fish. And it was just a plain van, a pool van, what do they call that, a fifth wheel or something? And so they decided to have a wrap put on it, like the buses in the city. And so the wrap has pictures of all the kids fishing and, you know, a, a kind of a mural artwork on it of a big fish coming out of the water, you know, and stuff like that. And, um, it looks quite nice now, and it wasn't all that expensive. And when it, when you're talking about actually painting on a mural, doing actual artwork, you've probably got two options, an art student or, or somebody who just, you know, has an itch to do a mural. We have quite a few of those in the city that are done on a volunteer basis, or you can hire an artist to do it. But I think a wrap might be a faster and cheaper solution.
I bet you, I'll look it up tomorrow, but I bet you that the mural is not just a painting. It probably is, is more of like a description of, not just like a signage copy, but like a wall of copy or art, you know?
Applied art.
Right, and so we can look at it and see what that says. Um, I would think that a wrap would qualify as that in some way, you know?
And they're removable.
Yeah.
It's a technique.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, to apply, right.
Anything else? Old business? Other business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Deb, and second by Chip. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.